Okay. Welcome to this hearing via Zoom of the local historic district. The purpose of the HDC is to aid property owners in the town in preserving and protecting the distinctive characteristics and architecture of buildings and places significant in the history of Amherst. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. A hyperlink to the hearing is posted on the town's online calendar. We require one of three certificates to ensure that new construction and most alterations of exterior architectural features in the district meet requirements. And for today's hearing, we will review an application for 32 Cosby Avenue. Do you, are people here from Cosby?
Yes, I will let them in as panelists.
And I should do a roll call before we begin with them. So, Greta, here. Ben?
Here.
Bruce?
Yeah.
Betty?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Nicole?
Here.
And I'm here too, Nancy Ratner. Welcome, Jessie.
Hello, everyone.
Would you like to tell us about your project?
Sure. Walker, do you have the slides maybe? They'd be easier, or I can probably share if you don't.
Walker has them.
The couple of images we sent.
I've got them.
Okay, great. So maybe, let's see what you got. So we live on 32 Cosby. We've been there for eighteen years. Pretty much, this is my wife Kim down below. Pretty much since arriving. We both love to sit on our front steps. It's just been steps. We like interacting with our neighbors, et cetera, et cetera. So I've had this planned for quite a while to add a small porch on the east side of our house. Really just big enough for a couple of chairs, a small table, so we can actually sit properly instead of just sitting on the stoop. Even though I'm from New York City and I enjoy sitting on stoops. But, so it's a pretty simple plan, as I think you've seen.
And you see that.
Yep, this is the current status. And then if you want to go to the next one, maybe the next picture first. This is an AI rendering, which is remarkably good. Our builder just spent half an hour and popped this out of AI-generated image. We'll reuse or reusing the same wood as the steps are currently, which is E-Pay. The stairs basically remain the same. What's not shown, there will be a handrail on the west side as well.
I'm assuming.
On the east side. The, the main landing will come out one extra course of a three and a half inch E-Pay, and then just extend straight to the east edge of the house, just like you're seeing. So we're adding, I think, about eleven feet in width, about, yeah, there you go. Thank you, Walker, eight feet depth. That's basically it. We will have a rail. We're hoping to have this cable rail instead of actual wood. So the height of the handrail, just visually, I think it's a lot nicer and will block less of our view looking up. Yes, we've actually already done our, redone our cement walkway. It's now stones that aren't quite that small, but like actually looks pretty similar to what's shown in the AI-generated image. So nothing on the house will change at all, except the door swing of our screen door that you're seeing there. And eventually we'll plant some other low shrubs in front of the deck, I imagine, but don't have all that perfectly planned quite yet. So I think that's about all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Do I have comments or questions from members of the commission? Greta?
First, I think it's a really lovely house. I've walked by it and driven by it, just a really gorgeous, sweet house. I wondered, I'm glad to hear that you're going to plant some shrubs because I wondered about the cement pillars. And so will the planting be in front of that, maybe?
Yes, that's, that's the plan because we don't want to look at that particular either. So.
Yeah, okay.
If you recall on the original image right now, there's a good bit of shrubbery, just random, not random, but a few things in front of the house blocking sort of the downspout and some of that, there's a little condensation spout from a mini split. But yes, that will be the plan, basically. So you won't see the underside at all, the cement and the gap that's under there.
Okay. Other questions? Bruce?
Just because it's not a conflict of interest, but some people might think it is. Jessie and I are currently on the planning board together and, and are pretty active also on the housing subcommittee, and we do a lot of work together publicly. That doesn't represent a conflict of interest. But I just want to make it clear that I'm not, as I know this gentleman, and we've, as far as, I, I think this is a nice piece of work. As far as the, the concrete piers are concerned, we've, in houses that I've had been associated with over the years, we've often painted these things dark brown or something. And, and my son-in-law actually went one step further. He, he, he just built a little encasement out of the Goshen stone that he also had associated with his, just made a little. So one could even do that if you didn't want to screen with plants, because screening with plants means you wouldn't be able to look out onto the street. Maybe, maybe, maybe you do, maybe you don't. But there are other, there are other opportunities to make that white concrete go away. I think this is appropriate. I recognize that the cable rail, which is the horizontal stainless steel strands of cable that you see there, is not what would have been done a hundred or more years ago. But this house, of course, wasn't done a hundred or more years ago. It's in a neighborhood where we often see ballasted porches, sorry, ballasted, vertically ballasted balustrades. But I think this modern treatment is, is fitting. Kind of consistent with my view, as I've expressed a few times, that, that this is the, the late 20th century, early 21st century design presence. And the material is a, is a contemporary material, and so is the balustrading. So I, I, I think it's fitting. And I don't have any other questions, I don't think, beyond that.
Thanks, Bruce. I like that idea of painting, even if we do. I mean, I think we will plant some low things, but I think that would even help more to make it disappear.
Are there any other thoughts from the committee?
Yeah, but Ben, I, I walked up and down the street of Jessie, and I didn't see, I didn't see any other decks like this coming out from the front. There, there were a number of different iterations of entryways, but they were not, they were integral to the house and they were not very large. And I'm, so I'm, I'm wrestling with this. I completely understand why you would like to do this, especially as one who likes to sit out on the front porch and watch people walk by and whatnot. But I do find the, the, there are issues of compatibility with me, that it, it seems somewhat incompatible with the other facades in front of the houses on Cosby Ave. And I'm, I'm wrestling with that.
Sure. Can I add some thoughts? So, so I agree they're none quite like this. I would offer a couple thoughts. One is there's very little consistency. So the house immediately to the east has a rather wide landing with chairs on it, which is also unique to our street. There's nothing else like that. The one directly across from that, so the identical from us, Dan Wallach and Jonah Mira, they have a large covered porch that was an addition to the original house. Again, unique for our street, but fits their house. And then the rest of the houses pretty much have straight entryways similar to what we had. Some have pillars with a covered little triangle. So that, I think the point I'm making is they're all quite different also. So I don't feel like we're disrupting some congruity when you look across the street. Yeah, that's all I'd say.
Other thoughts? Betty?
I think it looks fine. It's clearly modern. It's small, it's in scale with the house, and it's removable. So I think with, especially with the shrubs sort of hiding a couple of the more modern details, I think it's just fine.
Does anyone else have anything to say? Nicole, you haven't spoken.
Bruce? No, I think most, I don't have anything to add.
Bruce?
I was listening to Ben, and I, in some, in, in some instances, I, I would be more inclined to agree. I was going to say what Jessie said, but I was also going to say, and this may or may not be something that we choose to fold into our deliberations, but I folded into my personal deliberation. And this is really from my time with, my, my work with the planning board. These, these neighborhoods are quite stressed. I mean, all neighborhoods in Amherst these days are stressed by the, 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 the threat, I guess, of student rentals arriving in the neighborhood. And it's not because specifically that students are bad people who disrupt and, and egregious presences. It's that a, a transitory presence is disruptive of neighborhoods and neighborhood vitality because the relationships, the, the occupants of, of a rented house, particularly one that's a student rental, cycles annually typically. So there is a very great limit to the likelihood that occupants of these houses become active participants in the neighborhood. So all of that to say that the neighborhood vitality in the modern era is under threat. And so one of the things that history should hopefully tell us over time, as, as our neighborhoods prevail in spite of this, this load, it's, will, will be things like this that put people on the street and connect people with the neighbors. And the, the idea of being able to be associated with your house, sitting out in front of your house and connected to the street visually and as who you are and so forth, I think is a, is an active response to preserving or contributing to the preservation of neighborhood vitality. It's not really a, an architectural historical consideration. I think it's a social historical consideration that we hopefully will be doing things that are going to leverage the preservation of neighborhood vitality, particularly in these residential districts proximate to the university. So I think it's relevant to that, too. But as, as I, 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 I'm, I'm in favor of this addition.
Good. I'm inclined to agree with everything that's been said. We haven't heard from Steve. Steve, do you have anything you wanted to add to this? Are we ready to make a motion? Bruce?
I would move that the commission grants a certificate of applicability.
Appropriateness, yeah.
Finding consistent with the sections of the bylaw, and that we close the public hearing. I think we have to vote to close as well.
Is there any comment from the public beyond, outside of the commission? I don't see anybody else there. Okay. Shall we close the?
I second the motion.
Thank you. All right, I think we're ready to vote then. Greta? Nicole?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
And I do. So congratulations, Jessie. You will have a front porch, and we hope to see you sitting out there soon.
We will do. Thank you all. See you soon, I'm sure.
Thank you for coming.
Are you done with jury?
No, I'm just starting week two of at least three, so.
Oh, gosh.
Well, at least something good happened today.
Yeah. Thanks all. Bye.
Okay, bye. All right, so this ends the public hearing, and we're ready for the public meeting now. And our first item on the agenda is the East Amherst LHD study report update. So Walker, do you have something to say to us?
All I've got for this is confirmation that MHC received it. It took a while to get the confirmation, and that we need to think about scheduling the next public hearing. We can schedule it at any time past November fourteenth. I do have to post it, so there has to be, you know, two weeks plus, a little over two weeks advance notice. So sometime, I don't know if we want to try to fit it in before Thanksgiving or go ahead and just wait till after Thanksgiving.
I think it should be after, with people's.
Kind of where I was leaning on things. So maybe the first week or two of December might be ideal.
Let me also ask when Chris is available, because he, we'll need him to do that PowerPoint presentation again.
Right.
Yeah, so if you want to reach out to him, Steve, and we can figure this out after the meeting, too. We don't have to figure it out this minute.
Okay, I'll email him today.
Okay.
Do, do you want to set a tentative date of December eighth and see if that works for Chris?
Okay.
Sounds good. Do we want to schedule it for an evening just to make it easier for the public to attend?
We probably should.
Do you want to do the usual?
Yep.
Well, I could send out a poll.
I'm sorry, I can't do it that day. My wife has a.
Oh, okay.
Some medical appointment in Boston that I have to go to.
Why don't I send out a poll for those two weeks? And we'll see what works for most people.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, then we can move on to the discussion of updates to the rules and regulations. So thank you again, Walker, for working on this and making a zillion changes.
Before we go on, could I just interject for one second?
Yeah.
And just, for the CPA report, I submitted a CPA application. I don't know if everyone knows this. For design guidelines. And the town staff got back to us and said that they would pay for the design guidelines out of the town coffers without us getting a grant. So I just want to let everyone know that we've hired Chris again to draw up the design guidelines. And Nancy, are we going to address the committee after the design rules and regulations? Or?
Yeah, I think we should discuss them before they go public.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, Chris said he wanted somebody to work with him.
Oh.
Oh, and that's what I, before we get into this nitty gritty of the rules and regulations, I wanted to, wondering if we could just deal with that really quick? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's perfectly fine. So I would be willing to work with him. I don't know exactly what he needs, but, or wants, but.
Does anyone else want to work with Chris drawing up the design guidelines? He wanted to know. No volunteer?
You, you can pass my name to him and tell him that I'll be happy.
I don't think I have time, Steve, but in some respects, I, I should, I'm pretty active with the, the design guidelines for the downtown that have been, been worked through with Dodson and Flinker over the past eighteen months to two years. I, I don't know whether that would, my, my experience with that would be helpful or not. But why don't you just know that that's what I've been involved in periodically over this recent period? So maybe we have a beer or something and just think about it. But I, I don't want to commit to being an active presence because I've got too many other things that are going on at the moment. But if we can distill some useful experience from what I've been doing, then we can, then we should try, see if it's relevant.
Bruce, did you look at, have you seen the, the one that Chris did for Fairfield, Connecticut?
I've seen it. I've got it, you know, tucked away in, in my electronic file. But it was a while back that that was circulated, a couple of months at least, I think, probably maybe midsummer. So I haven't got a clear recollection, but I know I can get to it in a minute or two.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying because we got him at a reduced price, because he's going to be using that, the Fairfield, Connecticut design lines as a template. So I'm going to give him Nancy's name, and I think I'm going to sign up again, too, just because I've worked with him before. But I just wanted, he asked, he requested that, I think, for the next meeting, he actually wants to talk to us. So about drawing up the design guidelines.
Good, okay.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think the way to do it might be to have a, the subcommittee of a couple of people to work with Chris, and then whoever, one of you two can come back at the regular meetings and just kind of give everybody else a bit of an update and see if there's any feedback.
Yep, that sounds like a good plan.
Okay.
Okay, that's excellent. Are you ready then to move on to the rules and regulations? So Walker has worked pretty hard to revise these and do it in a way that would allow us to focus our attention on the actual rules and consider whether there are things we want to change about what gets, what comes before us. So she has a nice chart here.
Yeah, so there's a bunch of little changes to this that we're not going to go over here because they're usually just making it match the, the updated bylaw or small editorial changes. But I would like to discuss the, the way that I have arranged how you determine what you review, because trying to streamline it so that it makes sense to people, and I'm also trying to make it so that you're not wasting your time on like really small projects that maybe don't need a whole hearing to review, but that you are definitely getting the things that are important. So I've created this, these three categories, I'll go down here, where there's a category that review isn't required. And by that, it's like, you know, it's things that don't even impact the building, things, I don't think we've put anything on here that wasn't already on here. The next category, oh, my words went, certificate of non-applicability, that's proposed to be equivalent to a staff review. So the building commissioner, or myself, or another planner determines that it's a small enough change that it doesn't require a hearing, having reviewed the plans, and then issues the building permit. And then the third category.
Which is missing.
Is just the wrong color, I think.
Oh.
Not sure why it's not. Anyway, it's supposed to be the certificate of applicability or a certificate of hardship, as the case may be, which would require a hearing from the commission.
Okay.
So, things that don't require any review, this is a list I took from the bylaw. I haven't changed anything. Interior work, exterior work that is not visible. I did add exterior work that maintains the same appearance and materials as existing structure. So we'd still have to review to make sure that that's the case. But if they're really just repairing, maintenance and repair, then it doesn't require review. And then anything else that's excluded, there's some very small things that are excluded. And then the things that do require approval. Where did I put the, yeah. May exclude from review through the staff review process. So the building permit would stand in for the certificate of non-applicability, and town staff would review it. So any questions about those three categories? I'm hoping you all got a chance to look at this before day two, but yeah.
Betty? You're muted, Betty.
Okay. On three point one point D, it was where you said exterior work that maintains the same appearance and material as existing structure. I think that should be reviewed by staff, or it should say exterior repair work that maintains. Because that could be, you could interpret that pretty broadly if you felt like it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I agree.
So when you get down to the chart, I thought that staffed should be, the staff box should be checked.
For this one?
Yeah. Another question, is the staff review quick? So like, so would it happen within a week or such? I know with a, with a review like we just did today, that can take some months since they were planning to do it. Can that just be done quickly?
Yeah, we'll probably have somewhere in there where it says, I would like to give us a couple of weeks, just because sometimes we get busy and we don't get to the reviews right away. But in general, it should be a faster process than a hearing, to be sure, because we don't have to notice it.
Yeah.
So it'd be like a week or two, yeah.
But I can also imagine there might be an emergency, in which case, you know, someone would just have to go ahead.
If it's an emergency that impacts the like safety of the building or something, the building commissioner can override the review process.
Okay.
And then for a situation where the staff review it, but then it gets bumped to the committee, how is that going to affect the timelines? Because then we wouldn't be able to get that hearing done within the thirty days or whatever.
Well, the hope is that it's not going to take any longer than it does now. I already review all the building permits that are within the district to see whether they're applicable or not, because I get all the building permits. So a lot of it's interior work, stuff that wouldn't need a hearing. So it shouldn't take too much longer to review these smaller projects and still get the hearing done within the deadline. I think we should take a good look at the deadlines and make sure that they're doable, but I think it is. The, this deadline's sixty-five days. It's a pretty, it's a pretty good amount of time.
Bruce?
I agree. I mean, essentially, this is very little change from the way we actually do business, I think. We've had, we have these three columns. What Walker's done is to make it clear how we do this. And that's a great step forward, I think. Because a few years ago, we essentially created this middle column by giving certain, you know, authority to the building commissioner to, to make a decision, essentially, which you now have termed a certificate of non-applicability, which is great. It gives a, a clear structure to something that we decided some time ago, and, and it's now quite nicely delineated just where something fits in this. And I think, Nicole, you were saying that with the replacement of the, this one we're looking at, replacement with similar, substantially similar appearance and materials, I too think that that check mark should be moved to where it now is. And, and I've got a similar suggestion for one or two others, based on that this work probably requires a building permit. So if, my logic was, anything in that action column that requires or likely requires a building permit automatically goes into the certificate of non-applicability. Because why wouldn't it? It's, it's, it's being reviewed, the, the work is being reviewed by the building inspector, who's also the building commissioner. So we may as well safeguard the process by representing that anything that needs a building permit also in the process receives a certificate of non-applicability. And I think I had, it may not have been that one, but let's see. Reconstruction, this, these are not bulleted, but I think you go down to reconstruction. There you are. And I think that one also should be moved for exactly the same logic, because the, what's in the, the, the work description there is definitely going to require a. the work description there is definitely going to require a building permit. I didn't see.
Is actually taken directly from the I think it's the bylaw says that you don't need a permit, a certificate, if it's because you got destroyed by a firestorm or something, so that might be
Maybe I didn't destroyed by fire, I didn't.
By law, yeah.
And in so, even so, I I wasn't aware. I've I've just become aware over the years that stuff that didn't require a building permit in the eighties did in the nineties, and then stuff that didn't require it in the nineties, blah, blah, blah. Building more and more workers requiring a permit. So I think it doesn't hurt to put it into this, because it's a, it's a, it's potentially a significant amount of work that's been taken care of, and this is just a safeguard. The only other comment that I have on this chart, which I repeat, I think is a is a very clear way and helpful, not just to staff and to us, but also to particularly, I think, to applicants. The and keep it where it is, this is because you see where it says light fixtures down there, it says all visible from a public way. I had it's mentioned that it's if something is visible from a public way. I don't think we need that because logically, we should put that in at the end of every one of these. And particularly this one, I think further to the to the beginning, which is the renovation, I think, or it's it's, you know, the whole, it's it's the big enchilada stuff pulling, there you go. Pulling down or or destroying, removing. You can, you you can do some of that if it's not in, if it's not visible from a public way. And and I thought, oh, we should put that in here in in that particular item, but then I thought, well, no, that applies to everything here. It's only applicable, and as you say, it it says so in in number two there. Somehow, I think we need to make that. I'm inclined to make that quite bold, or I'm inclined to put it somehow in the in the table so that people are know absolutely that this is only required if it's if it's in the if it's if it's visible from and it's, we shouldn't, I didn't. Can you scroll back to the that table of four again, up top? Good, the indefinite article from a public way. I wanted to make sure it wasn't the public way because we've had quite a number of instances where multiple public ways, the 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 subject property is visible for more than one public way. So I think that logically, I would eliminate those two clauses that say visible from a public way down in the light fixtures there. Because the implication is that nothing else.
Just I could just say.
Yes, because the 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 public wave viewing is 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 applies to everything. And by by selectively saying it in some and not others, it would potentially confuse folks, I think.
Yeah.
Happens again down under removal.
Yeah, although that one might be a good one to just kind of highlight since it's kind of broad.
Yes, it's 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 yeah, I I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm right about this. I'm just saying that it's logical. But we want to be clear in our communication, so maybe a little bit of a non, non-logical is is okay. I just want to make sure that we don't by implication suggest that other things that are not visible from the public way still are applied. I'm probably being a little over over anxious about this. I think I should just get down out of my tree.
So a couple of things I wanted to bring up. One is that if something doesn't require a building permit, it technically doesn't require a review, which isn't generally an issue, but there have been times when people have, like, there are things that you can do like removing a porch that don't require a building permit, but might be something you would want to review. So the main issue where we might run into this is if you want to be able to review fences, they do currently acquire a building permit, but they're the plan is to not have them require a building permit because most places in the state do not require a building permit for fences. So we can include fences. I came up with categories of fences so that you're only only reviewing fences that enclose front yards where it's really obvious. If they don't go beyond the facade, or if the front yard has always been enclosed, then it could be a staff review. That's just three categories that I came up with based on another community that doesn't have to remain that way. Or you can say it doesn't require a building permit, we don't review it at all. That's the other option, but.
I like what you've done.
Can't help thinking about our recent intensive deliberation on the sideyard fence in North Prospect.
Yeah, fences have come up a few times, so I wanted to try to come up with something a little simpler and less onerous feeling.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's good, what you've got.
The other one. I try to simplify the heat pump one a little bit because that one gets very complicated. And I'm often, they're often hard to review because they get installed first, and then I see that they were installed. So if it's on the front facade or it's between the public way, it gets reviewed if not rather than having to have limits on how many and how long the line set is and stuff. So that's simpler. It may not be what you want to see there. Rita?
I noticed that I think there's two new heat pumps on the house of the corner of Fearing and Lincoln that came to us for the auxiliary unit, but I don't know, I just noticed, I think they're new, and I don't know if this would change whether. Anyway, that's just a thought.
Yeah, if they're visible and they're not screened, they would have to go through a review.
Line sets are also a highly visible component of these. And I think it's true that in generally speaking, the the homeowner or the applicant probably doesn't know where the line sets. These are the the refrigerant lines that connect the outdoor compressor condenser units that are mounted on pads outside to the indoor air handling devices and so forth. And and they're typically quite prominent because they have to be insulated and then they get covered. The 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 positive side, though, is that these things are eminently removable, and they don't do any damage to the existing structure. So you could pull them away and the existing structure will be as it always was right behind it. So maybe that's enough of a reason why we can say we can be indifferent to the trajectory of these line sets. Is that something that we're all comfortable with?
And I have seen other communities just require that they be painted a color that matches the outside of the house, so they're not as visible. I think you could probably require that, even though you don't regulate color otherwise, that it just it's not, you know, a white line set on a dark house or something.
But what happens, Walker, when someone puts in a heat pump and doesn't come before us?
That's a tough one. Yeah, I've been trying to figure out what to do about that, because I see the permit after it's been installed, and I'll they don't usually include pictures, they don't usually include information, so either I drive down there or I have to wait to see if they'll send me pictures to see whether it needs review or not, and then they don't tend to come back and check the permit. So we've had somewhere, we've repeatedly asked for more information and not received it. And just don't hear back at all from the applicants. Once it's installed, they don't really have any incentive to. So I'm not sure. That's something that we need to work on here from the building department level, I think.
It it seems like there should be some kind of penalty for not responding to those.
Yeah. Or some way to review it before it gets installed.
Well, that would be ideal.
For some reason, electrical permits come after you install the work of all the building permits they get. You could apply for them after you've done the work. So I don't think we need to go through every single one of these, and you can definitely email me or something if you come up with a
I I went through every one of them, except for the two comments made, they they seem fine to me.
Yeah. My other thought is to wait to approve this until the design guidelines are done. If we want this to match the categories in the design guidelines and have the same like subsets of work, we can do that. Because that's how the design guidelines are arranged, they're by by first porches and then roofs or whatever it is. So we could, we could wait and have it match if we want it to. Just make sure that we have the same things in both of the documents, but.
It it might be worth sharing this with Chris so that he can actually work with it rather than.
Yeah, or I could take, I was gonna say, I could take a look at that. The Connecticut one that he's using as a template and see if it has categories in it that I don't have here.
Yep. I think both are good ideas. Okay, well, this looks very good to me, and I really appreciate all the work that went into it.
Great. Yeah, I just, I made a few other small changes that people should attend to the hearing. That that you may, as a group or individually, conduct a site visit. You're not required to conduct a site visit as a group.
I still think the recommend, just recommending them to attend the hearing is not as strong of language. I mean, we literally hold the whole application if they don't show up.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know about putting require in here, we could do that, or we could say the commission may choose to continue the hearing if no one shows up and just say out front what the penalty is. I think those are the two ways to approach it.
Yeah, how about if we say, and it is strongly recommended that they attend the hearing, not attending may result in Yeah, perfect.
Maybe make another to to a future date. Just kind of even.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good.
A distant future date.
Way in the distant.
Yeah, pretty much everything else is just minor changes, I think, so. Yeah, so if we're happy with that, I can just take another quick look at this, compare it to the design guideline that Chris did send us as an example. And then the next step would be to have a public hearing to approve these changes. I can send you all a clean copy with the changes incorporated in for another look, and then we could schedule a public hearing at your next meeting or whenever we wanted to to actually approve the changes.
Mm hmm, okay.
So anything else about the rules and regs?
I just want to say thank you for doing that, Walk, right? I think it's, as important it is for us to have these, I think it really does make the the regulated community, that the people are actually submitting applications, it makes it so much easier for them, and that's really, that's very important.
Yeah, that was, that was my goal. The other thing, I went to a whole webinar on local historic districts and how to effectively run them, and this was one of the ideas they had, and the other idea they had was that staff should be presenting a report at the beginning of each one that kind of sums up the project. If there's a hearing, sums up the project and gives at least a recommendation ahead of time based on the rules and regs and the design guidelines. So I think once we have the design guidelines, I'll start doing that as well. Even if you don't take my recommendation or even read it, it's there in the record so that if someone were to appeal or sue or something, we'd have that, which you're supposed to have legally.
Yeah, I think that actually, yeah. My mistake in not calling on you, asking you to do that each time, so if I don't remember, just remind me.
Yeah, I've been thinking about it, and then I thought it'd be easier to wait till the design guidelines are done, but I could probably start doing it based just on the rules and regs.
It's actually, it's in our guidelines and, yeah. That it's kind of standard practice, so we should be doing that.
Yep.
We do also need to approve the minutes, which you've done, once again, with very nicely done. I think they're very accurate, they're well-written, they're clear, they're concise, and I appreciate that. So do I have approval of everybody for the minutes? We can do a raise your hands, raise your hands, raise your hands. Perfect, okay, you have the approval of the minutes. Unanticipated items within the past forty-eight hours, are there any?
I will say I did get just this morning a application for another ADU. So that's going to be, need to be reviewed at some point at your next meeting.
Where?
Disappeared when I I, yeah, I can't remember off the top of my head, it's not on my list, but yeah.
Okay, public comment, do we have anybody observing this?
I think our correspondent is here.
Yeah, did you have any comments, Hilda? Looks like not.
No? Okay. Let's set, well, I think rather than setting a meeting day. No, we should set a meeting day.
Well, yeah.
We're gonna set a public hearing, but a meeting date is different, so let's set another meeting day.
Do you want to do one in a well, probably not the Monday right before Thanksgiving, I would think, so probably either December first or December eighth.
Let's do December, I can't do December first, let's do December eighth.
And Steve can't do December eighth, as I recall.
He can't do it December eighth. How how about either the second or the ninth? Can we meet on Tuesdays? Are there, are Tuesdays bad for people?
I can't do Tuesdays.
Okay.
And I can't do the second.
Are any Wednesdays okay?
I could do a Wednesday.
You want to try for Wednesday, the third of December?
I'm not sure I can do that, but.
Well, and the other thing is, we do actually say in the rules and regs that you meet on Mondays.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if we can just change the day of the week, but we can push it till the fifteenth, if that's better, or you'll still have quorum, even if Steve or Nancy isn't there. But I know it's nice to have everybody. You're muted, Steve.
Are we within the timeline for that application?
We should be.
Steve?
You're muted.
Why don't you go ahead and schedule it for the eighth? I just feel like I should be there for the hearing on East Amherst. That was my concern.
Okay.
So go ahead and do it on the eighth.
Okay.
Okay. We'll try to make it a very dull meeting.
Okay, the
So three o'clock on December eighth. And I spent the morning hanging my paintings in Town Hall, so you should all come and see them.
Yes, and when is the opening, Nancy?
The opening is Thursday at five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Big party, big party. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, Walker.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.